STEM is precise, no margin for error.
Dare to forget that. Dare to have fun with it. Get weird with it. Dare to send those old STEM theories flying past the neighbor's house into outer space. Dare to program something internet breaking, record breaking. Dare to blow their minds. Dare to learn the difference between sedimentary and metamorphic rock. Go find those rocks. Dare to keep daring. Dare to STEM. Check out She Can STEM to get started.
We'll now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, which is an action item.
Sole moved.
Second.
Motion made to approve the agenda, approval of the agenda made by Melissa, second. Jennifer, all those in favor signify.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six zero. We don't have any citizens' comments today, so we'll move on to our student representatives Emily and Natalie. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having us again. I'm Emily.
I'm Natalie.
So April was a pretty eventful month. First, I'll start off with saying that ACT testing took place. It went really well for juniors and there's a big relief now that it's over. However, that relief won't last long because AP testing is coming up. So AP bio exams, AP calculus exams, I know that's coming up. And if you want to take the AP exam, this is not required, but for the college credit, you do have to pay the $65 fee. And if you want to do that, that's on Infinite Campus. I know I already paid mine. No. But for those who do, make sure to do that if you want the college credit. Next up is the talent show. It was last Thursday. I personally had a lot of fun with it. A lot of people had a lot of fun watching it. I know our student council was responsible for sort of managing it and holding it together. And I gotta say, you guys did a great job. There's a lot of laughs. We had a comedian. He was one of our talents. The singers were really good. What was your favorite part?
I kind of liked the flute. I thought that was really funky, so I like that.
That was good. I think Trinity did a good job singing. Let's see. Prom is coming up on April 30th. It's going to be at the bowling alley. I know we've talked about it before, but it's in a couple weeks, so I just want to send that reminder. Grand march will either be at 3:00 or 4:00 p.m. You have to choose one time, and the dance will be from 8:00 to 12:00. And we have, I've been counting, 29 school days left. And I have it on my whiteboard at home. So senior meetings are becoming, you know, more common. Ms. Hanson and Mr. Coell have been, you know, holding those kind of not weekly, but every couple weeks. And I know valedictorians have been meeting now. So that's something that's coming up. And that's all I have to say.
Yes. So spring sports have also started and have been off to a super great start despite Mother Nature not being super cooperative and a couple cancellation and postpones events. Everyone is remaining super positive and super optimistic. We're ready to be consistently outside and we're hoping for some warm weather, but overall, I think everyone is just super excited to be competing again. We had a signing day last week on April 13th. Thirteen student athletes signed to play sports at the college level. This is one of the biggest numbers of signings in Monticello, so that's super exciting. Matt Kushel is playing lacrosse at Elmhurst University. Dakota Parker is diving at University of St. Thomas. Clay McGaw is swimming at St. John's. Wyatt Sawatski is playing football at St. John's. Zach Anderson is playing baseball at Crown College. Andrew Fickell is playing soccer at Oakland City University. Kate Hansen is running track and cross country at MSU Morehead. Aaron Jaeger is running track at University of Eau Claire. Caitlin Lindberg is playing basketball at Iowa Wesleyan. Tyler Rustling is running, is playing tennis at Hamlin University. Tyler Modoff, Taylor, oh my gosh, I can't talk today, my gosh. Ty Modoff is playing soccer at NOKA Ramsey. Antonio Portillo is playing soccer at Bethel University. Natalie Emrick is running track at College of St. Ben's. It was a great show of student support. It was just really exciting to see peers supporting peers. I think overall, everyone is super excited to see what's to come for all of these student athletes. Another big thing that we had in April was our polar plunge on April 7th. Unified had a mobile polar plunge come to the high school. It was a super big success. We had a goal of $7,000 and we just completely shattered that. We raised $12,311 for Special Olympics in our Unified Club. We had 44 jumpers and we even had some admin out there, which was super exciting to see. We're just hoping to continue and grow this like tremendously through the next couple years. So it was super great and super exciting.
Yeah, so that's all we have to say. You know, Natalie and I are very grateful for you to have us and we're looking forward to next month as well. Thank you.
Natalie, question real quick. Do the fundraiser rates go to Unified or is it kind of for all Special Olympics or how does that work? Okay. Okay.
We have the resident expert in the crowd here too.
It's awesome. Very exciting.
They say you keep 35%.
Yep. Is this the first year that we've done the polar plunge?
Congratulations. That's spectacular. Yeah.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Grabs, you run the Unified program? You know, I do awesome things. It's awesome. So it's, I know you've made some people very happy, my family, so it's made my life a little easier. So thank you. You did a good job with that stuff. Awesome. We'll move forward to fiscal stability. All your information was submitted to you earlier on consent agenda. Snowmatters Bill's trip requests that talked about your subcommittee meetings. We do need, is there any discussion for that? Now we need approval of an action item.
Sole moved.
Second.
Motion made by Melissa, second made by Jennifer to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes six zero. Next, we have Superintendent Mr. Olson to discuss more gifts to the district.
All right, so I get to bring forward three big additions again. So the community support continues to just be so overwhelming. We can't be any more happy for the support that we get. So All Elements Roofing is bringing $1,000 to our Monticello fishing team. UMC or Ultra Machining Company is bringing in $1,000 to our fishing company, our fishing team, sorry. And Cargill is bringing forth $1,000 for community education scholarships. So once again, thanks for great support across our community.
This is a resolution.
Therefore, be it resolved by the Monticello School Board, number 882, to gratefully accept the following donations from All Elements Roofing, $1,000 for Monticello fishing team, from Ultra Machining Company, $1,000 for Monticello fishing team, and from Cargill, $1,000 for community education scholarships.
Second.
Resolution presented by Jennifer with the second from Melissa for the gifts of All Element Roofing for $1,000, Ultra Machine Company for $1,000, and Cargill for $1,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes six zero. Superintendent Mr. Olson will introduce students from student council.
That's just for me. I want to get the stars of the show up as quick as possible, but I do also want to make sure they know how proud we are of them. So I'm going to call up the leaders of our student council program, Brooks Wiki and Stacy Hughes. And we're going to have the kids come up and do a little presentation for us here today, the students are. And so with the leaders, we have Alexa Mack, we have Thor Lemke, we have Brooklyn Jones, and we have Ellie Erickson. And they're going to do a little presentation for us. And I see we've got them all set up there. And one of the great things that we get to do at school board meetings is to celebrate students and people. And, you know, we've already connected to Unified during the student representative report. But I also get to tell you that our student council was student council of the year. And elected officer of the year is Thor Lemke across the state of Minnesota. So we have greatness donning our presence all over the place here today, so.
Hi, everyone. My name's Alexa Mack. I'm Monticello's student council president. As long as, as lo, gosh, I can't talk. So I'm also the president of Minnesota Student Council, so it's president of like all the student councils in Minnesota too. But to start off, everyone can introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Brooklyn Jones. I'm VP in Public Relations of our student council.
I'm Ellie Erickson, and currently I do not have like any role in our leadership team, but next year I am going to be our secretary.
I'm Thor Lemke, and I will be next year's president.
All right. So you can go to the next slide. So in the very beginning, we only had three people in our student council. I wish that was a joke. It is unfortunately not. So open house booth was very huge for us. This is where we advertised for student council as a club to join for next year and the upcoming year. We set up a QR code that directly went to a Google form that students could sign up for student council so we could get their contact information and keep them in the loop on what's happening. And in the, and then at towards the end of August, we, or beginning of August, sorry, there's a summer leadership academy, which I was in charge of. Basically, all student schools from Monticello and all around Minnesota were welcomed to come in to Sauk Rapids, I believe, and listen to a speaker talk, connect with other schools, and basically build our leadership skills up from there. So for this one, we did homecoming. Homecoming was our big thing in September. You can go to the next slide.
So for homecoming, every single year, we have a pet fest and a senior sunrise and a senior sunset. The senior sunset we'll do at the end of the year, obviously, but the senior sunrise is just a fun way for all the seniors to get together and just have a symbolic morning together as the sun's rising on our last year here at the high school. That's also when we took our class picture. So it's just a really nice week and really nice morning to start off our senior year. And then the pet fest, you can see our homecoming court on the screen as well. That's when we just get to announce who the candidates are, and they get to introduce themselves and have a little fun doing that. They always dress up and it's always fun because we get to, you know, read all their bios and it's just, it's a lot of fun. And then they also do dress up days for homecoming. And this year, it was really well. We had really good participation, so we were very excited about that.
So something new we've done for the past two years is an outdoor coronation. Basically, the king and queen candidates all met at the school the Sunday before homecoming week. Dinner was provided to the candidates from a local restaurant. They were then taken out onto our field and asked to walk across the field while a short bio was read about each candidate from our MCs. The candidates then stood in front of a box that had white or red balloons inside, depending on the winner. Red and black was for the winners and then white for everyone else. They opened up the box and it revealed the winner.
On top of that, for our homecoming week, we also had a volleyball tournament this year. We, as a student body, had the students choose their teams and they could be coed. We then had them compete in like a bracket style, and it actually ended up being a really big hit. We had it after school one day. We had a ton of students come out, compete, and it was a really, really fun way to get the student body together and involve everyone within homecoming week.
All right, so homecoming closing. We had a teddy bear toss at our homecoming football game, which basically we sold little teddy bears. They were pretty small. The first half of the football game, and then during halftime, we had Hani Dahlheimer dressed up as a ref, and the kids and the dolls just got to throw the teddy bears at her, and whoever was the closest got half of what we made, which is a pretty big hit. It was fun to see all the smiling faces. We also sold T-shirts all week long. They're our biggest fundraiser of the year. This year's T-shirt design said Monticello Magic on the front in block letters, and the letter designs were filled with a logo for every sport and activity we have available at MHS. We sold them for $10. They're affordable to everyone. And then the end of homecoming week was our annual dance, which is always a hit. We set up decorations, a photo booth, served food and drinks, and we DJ our own dances. We have also supplied our own lights. We created QR codes that are used for song requests, and we had around 450 students attend this dance this year. October, okay. Next slide.
All right, so this year, we had a Halloween costume contest on October 29th, and we had overwhelming participation, hundreds of students. And so at the beginning of the day, we took a picture of every single student, and we had them fill out this little form. And then there was categories like funniest, scariest, or grade levels, best group, small and large. And what we did is we went through every single picture, and we, as a council, picked about the top 10 for each category, and then we had a Google form that allowed students to vote on their favorites in each category, and then we had a reward for those groups that won.
So we also hosted a door decorating contest. We asked students, our students and teachers in the high school, to decorate their higher door in their classroom. We had great participation for that. Student council members were the judges. And we chose the winner for four categories, most creative, most colorful, best theme, and most unique. Winners were given a bag of candy. We also asked that each classroom got a participation award, which is just like, it's on the screen. It's just a little sheet that said, congratulations on participating.
Another thing we did this year in October is we had our Mills Fleet Farm trunk or treat. So what this is, is we invite community members and organizations to the parking lot of Mills Fleet Farm in Monticello. We basically do like a trick or treat out of your trunk for the kids. It was a very, very popular hit this year. It was, it's a way for, it started back in 2020 for like a COVID-safe way of trick or treating. But for, between the two years, we've had an average of 1,500 pieces of candy and over 1,000 trick or treaters come out. It was really fun. We, as a student council, got to dress up as zombie cheerleaders and football players, and we handed out the candy to the kids. And it was a really fun way to bring the community together and like see the kids and see the Halloween spirit.
So for November, we had a Craigens Leadership Retreat and a Thanksgiving food drive. For the Leadership Retreat, we all went up to Craigens up north. I think it's up north. I don't really know. I'm bad at directions. But all the schools were invited. We, it was a lot like the Summer Leadership Academy where we all meet and we would talk about like leadership, things going on in our school, how we can better our school, big ideas, serious topics, stuff like that. And then I, as the executive board, would take it to a school board meeting that we had in January. But it was really great turnout. We learned a lot. We got to bond with each other. It was overnight. And I think it really just like helped connect us, I guess. And then for a food drive, we collected food and hygiene products for the community. It was over a week, like the week before Thanksgiving. Okay. So eMask was the first event that we hosted on behalf of Minnesota Association of Student Councils. It was an honor and a thrill to show off our school. The theme of the day was Jeopardy. When student groups arrived, they were given a pendant and fabric markers and were asked to design the flag to symbolize their school. The introduction was given by Mr. Revening, our school activities director, and Doug Erickson, who is the person in charge of Minnesota Association of Student Councils. Our school choir sang the National Anthem. Idea sharing, the speaker and hot topics were bookmarked by the Jeopardy game. So each school was their own Jeopardy team, and they competed in Jeopardy games throughout the day, and they won bragging rights, I guess, which is pretty competitive considering the schools that are in the division. And the motivational speaker was Erin Cross, who spoke about persevering in all that we do. Lunch from our local favorite, Bluestone, was served on our beloved Main Street. You can go to the next one. There we go.
All right. And then for, we had a great Toys for Tots drive this year in our school. At our school, we were able to raise $1,919.28 in addition to 220 toys for Toys for Tots. This was an all-time high for our school. So we were able to deliver our cash and toys straight to K-11, and we were, we were able to appear on the 6 o'clock news.
All right. So then we had our snow week, which is every single year. You can see our dress up days up there. And again, we had a really great turnout. Some of them were new this year, like our Space Cowboys Day, but it was still really cool to see what people came up with. And as always, we had our Magic Spirit Day. And it was just really nice to see everybody show their school spirit, even though it was really cold. They still dressed up and it was still, we really did have a good turnout.
So this year, we had a student staff basketball game. It was our second one since COVID. On Wednesday of snow week, we had 16 teachers and three teams of students challenge each other in a round of four 20-minute basketball games. Each student team was able to play each teacher team, and then the student team who scored the most points was able to take on all 16 teachers in the championship games. Teachers were victorious once again and were given all little medals.
Who were the teachers?
Oh, there was, yeah, there was teachers from all over, not just in the high school. We had some from middle school. Oh, yes. Yeah. But they were from everywhere. It wasn't just from the high school.
I think Mr. Coell made a game-winning basket in one of the games.
Along with our student staff basketball game in our dress up days, we also had a week-long medallion hunt for snow week. And so what it was is we had a 3D-printed snowflake that this year we hid in the main office in one of those fake Christmas trees. And every day, we would release a hint on our Instagram and announce it over the intercom, and students would go out and try and find this medallion. And it was a lot of fun for students. We actually had two winners this year that received a gift card as their prize. And then we also had bingo during homeroom twice during the week, where students were given a bingo card. And over the intercom, we had people in the main office calling out numbers. And if you got a bingo, your goal is to get down to the main office first because there was a limited number of prizes. to the main office first, because there was a limited number of prizes.
All right, so another thing that we did in February is we had some Valentine's Day sales. Our student council members sold carnation flowers for $1 for $3 or $2 for $5. We also sold those little candy conversation hearts for $1. And then also some grape, strawberry, and orange Crush Shota cans for $1 at lunch on Valentine's Day. This was our first time using the credit card reader given to us by the Community Ed, which was really a hit. It helped with our sales, since the high school students often don't carry cash with them, so they just like to use their card. So it was a great hit. It really involved the student body, and it was fun to celebrate Valentine's Day in that way.
We also had a door decorating winter edition. Again, it was a great hit. Teachers decorated their doors. Student council members went around judging the doors. Same categories as the fall. And overall, it was fun to look at all the doors. It was most creative, most unique, most inspirational, and best theme. And then, we didn't give participation awards this time, so just something different. You can go to the next slide. So for March, we had our state convention, which is every school in Minnesota is invited. It's, it was two days long this time. I went down on Friday to help set up. We were there all night setting up. It was crazy. It was carnival-themed. But basically, you get there in the morning. Our own Gavin Downer ran for state vice president, which is crazy and huge. It's really intimidating to do. You have to go and talk in front of the whole state of Minnesota and give a speech, answer questions on your feet. It's really impressive that he was able to do that. But we had big idea sessions, which is where we talk about serious topics like sexual harassment, diversity issues, LGBTQ+ in the school, and just serious issues like that. We also had little questions like, "What'd you do for homecoming?" and "What did you do for Snow Week? Do you guys have any fundraising events?" Just like little things like that. It's a great way to connect with every person in student council and honor society is there, too. I had to give up my power as president. There's a new president next year, which is kind of sad, but it was great. Thor Lemke was one Officer of the Year, which is crazy. It's a really big honor to win. I had to read all the applications, and it was long and tiring, but he was definitely qualified for that. And Monticello Student Council went off, Student Council of the Year, which is also amazing. We had, there was only a couple of schools that got picked out of the whole state. And it's a huge honor, it really is.
All right, so in addition to the PR specialist and VP, I'm the appreciation chair for our student council. So that means every single month, we honor and appreciate a different group in our school. October is custodian, November is kitchen, December is office, February is bus driver, March is paraprofessional, and May is teacher appreciation. So we give little gifts, and we have rolling announcements and PA announcements in addition to that, appreciating all of the wonderful staff that we have at Monticello. And we're super excited to continue that next year and see where it goes.
All right, so the upcoming events we have before the school year closes off, we had our talent show, which was a huge success. You guys heard about it earlier. It was fun to see all the smiling faces and the reactions to all of the acts. That was crazy and fun. We're gonna try to have a survivor week this week. Fingers crossed, we still need approval. But basically, it's where you, students can compete, like little minutes-winn-it tasks throughout the school day. It doesn't interrupt the school day, of course. And the winner will get a $100 cash prize. And it's just a fun way to compete against your classmates and such. We'll have an end-of-the-year student council party, just kind of to wrap everything up and appreciate one another and say goodbye to the seniors. Senior sunset to close out the seniors' year, which is just like a closing to the school year and just a memorable time to connect with your classmates and look at the next upcoming events in your life. Teacher appreciation will happen in May. We'll be having a teacher breakfast sometime in the early month of May. And then we'll, oh, paraappreciation as well, which will happen sometime this month. Brooklyn's got that all under control. And then we also have our final Eastern Division meeting happening on May 20th. We're gonna meet in a park and do a little community service event with each other to close out the student council school year.
Awesome. So next year, for our new, like, elected leadership team, so we first have Thor as our president. We also have our vice president. Her name is Kaylee Stigora. We have me as our secretary. We have our grade, one of our grade representatives as Gavin Downer. And then our other grade representative is Caleb Burmas.
All right, that is all that we have accomplished this year. We thank you all for having us. And does anyone else have anything to say?
No, just thank you. You've been so supportive of, like, for us over the years, and we just thank you for all that you guys have done. We really wouldn't be able to do this much for our school if it wasn't for you guys, so thank you.
I suppose you should stay up there in case there are any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
Can I just find out, what grades are you in?
I'm a senior.
I'm also a senior.
I'm a junior.
I'm also a junior.
Is the council made up mostly of juniors and seniors, or is it all grade levels?
This year, it's mostly made up of, it's kind of a mixture of upperclassmen. We have a little underclassmen here and there, but it's mostly juniors and seniors this year and a couple 10th graders.
You guys did an enormous amount this year. And when you ended it with, that's kind of just what we did. It was, that's an enormous achievement that you did, everything that you did. And congratulations to you on your positions for next year. And Thor, congratulations on getting president. That is an amazing achievement.
A couple times for us, we've held a leader of the, or advisor of the year. But it seems that there's a history of them giving it to people that are retiring. Maybe she retires. No, last year I was recognized as advisor. And this year, too, she should have maybe taken. Done, I think it is a huge undertaking. Homecoming in itself.
Oh, yeah.
You wouldn't understand how much work it is. And it is an immense undertaking to do all of that in the school year, as teachers and as students, just getting your, you know, feedback in the school, and then you're doing all of these activities, one after the other, after the other, making sure everything is organized, all that. But we've had some really great students. I just want to say thank you. It was great. I know the board approved some of our trips. They approved all of our trips. And so we thank you for letting us do that, because we do feel that leadership is so important, and the students are thriving with the leadership they have. We have over 20 members coming who have currently. This year, we had a huge explosion with juniors coming out for us. So we have a very large, that's represented. Caleb Burmas is on our board for next year. She will be a junior. The others are all going to be seniors. But we are.
Awesome. Any other questions?
I just want to say you built an impressive program with only three people to start. What you did is very impressive, so well done. And the new leadership has big shoes to fill.
I want to echo that as well, that, you know, we're coming out of a couple of really difficult years with COVID and everything. And it is, you really can't understand how much we delight in hearing good news, in hearing things that are successful and kids getting engaged again. And that is just, that's really, there's no value you can put on that because it's been such a tough time. And to hear like the juniors are coming out in force, they want to come back to school. They want to be normal again, you know, so. And the awards on top of that are just, my jaw is, that's amazing. I mean, that you took it from such a small group and then this much success. And Thor, Officer of the Year, and the two with our president for our whole state. That's just amazing, amazing. And I don't think the community knows enough about this, so.
Hopefully, they will know more soon.
Very impressive, good job.
Very impressive.
Thank you, guys.
Just very proud of you guys. And I don't have to speak right now, because you guys are fantastic.
We are very proud of you, very proud of you.
I'll close real quickly. Obviously, thank you for your contributions, because sometimes it's not easy to step out of your comfort zone and to be a leader and take chances. And obviously, you go from three to what you've done this year and the activities, you're taking a chance. And I'm sure sometimes it felt like this is never going to go off, but you, you probably baked it till you made it, and you did a really good job at it, and it went off. And so that's awesome that you're willing to step out there and be leaders, and that's important for us in society, society today. The other thing that I, I look at everything that you've done, and I don't know if you realize this, but there's probably a lot of activities they did over the course of the year that maybe a kid wasn't involved in anything, and you did something that helped them be involved in their school or helped them connect with another student in school. And so that's important. And so sometimes it might just seem like you're just doing these events because kind of, maybe that's what student council does. And you need to understand that what you're doing is you're helping other students connect with school and helping them belong, and that's important. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Hey, you're up next, Tina. Come on, dazzle us here.
I think first, we have a long-term facility maintenance approval for Wright Tech. So just like school districts, they're allowed to levy for long-term facility maintenance. Because they don't own property, they have to lease through, or do the property tax levy through their partnering schools. So they have health and safety costs, other deferred maintenance projects, just like schools, you know, roofs, sidewalks, windows, flooring, HVAC-type repairs and health and safety items as well. It's split with all the partnering schools. Our share amounts to about $24,000 to $25,000 for the whole year, which is similar to what was this year. So just a small part of our overall property tax levy.
This is a resolution, is that correct?
We have to read the resolution.
What do you need from that resolution?
Part I'm never sure of. Okay. Be resolved by the Monticello School Board of District Number 882, State of Minnesota, as follows. The School Board of Cooperative School District 966 approved a long-term facility maintenance program budget for its facilities for the 2023-2024 school year in the amount of $167,000, of which District Number 882's portionate share is $25,756.96. The various components of this program budget are attached as Exhibit A here, and are incorporated herein by reference. Said budget is hereby approved. And the rest of the resolution as follows. Seconded.
Motion to move forward as a resolution read by Jennifer and seconded by Jamie. Approving the resolution for contributions to Wright County Tech. All those favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls nay. Motion passes 6-0.
All right, now we have our budget revisions for the 21-22 school year. We have many different funds. Not all of them are going to be revised. Some are staying to their original budget that we did last June. For example, hockey, arena, debt service, and internal service, we're not making any revisions. We're just leaving as is. But the other ones, we will make a revision. Our first one, general fund, is our main operating fund, which includes our capital budget. But what I'm presenting, it doesn't include our Special Ed Cooperative Fund, Fund 12. On the revenue side, our revenue budget increased $2.8 million from $48.7 million to $51.5 million. We had higher enrollment come in at the start of the school year than what was estimated. So that increased our state aid and our property tax levy. We had an increase in federal aid due to the pandemic. We had two, over $200,000 in COVID testing money from the state and federal government. We had a tutoring grant this year for $200,000. We had emergency connectivity funds in the amount of $459,000. And we had our gear technology rollover from last year due to devices being backordered and not arriving until this year. On the other category, we had increased in our activity participation with all funds participating, gate revenue, and fundraising. On the expense side for our general fund budget, that increased $2.2 million, so almost the same amount as the revenues. A lot of that has to do with the grant. With that, or the federal funds that we received, we had extra staff due to the higher enrollment. We had lower in health insurance premiums with our latest health insurance bid. We saw an increase in subcosts due to current staff helping other staff that were absent. So that was a higher subcost rate, more leaves than normal. On purchase services, our long-term facility projects rolled over into July and August. So that goes under the supply, or the repairs and maintenance category. We had an additional nature-based lease. And we also had higher payments to other schools with care and treatment and other things that were kind of on hold with the pandemic. Under supplies and capital outlay, our carryover budgets for the buildings and technology rolled over. And this also included that $459,000 of the emergency connectivity grant for the devices. So what does that mean for our fund balance? We started the year at $7.5 million in our fund balance with revenues at $51.5 million and expenses at $52.5 million. We're spending down that fund balance by a million. So overall, fund balance is at $6.5 million, and that's broken up into many different categories. A lot of that's in restricted or reserves that are determined by the state, excuse me, the state. So the next slide has our, at the very bottom, our unassigned fund balance ending up around $3.4 million or about 6.5%. So with our original budget that we did last June, we thought we'd be at 4%. With the updated forecast, we thought we'd be, I thought we'd be about 7.5%. But taking a final look at, you know, subs, utilities, leaves, and kind of that last check of how everything is shaking out, we'll probably end the year about 6.5% with our unassigned fund balance. Next, we have our Special Ed Cooperative Fund. This just changed slightly. So our Special Ed Cooperative Fund is reimbursed from the co-op where they're purchasing our staff. So we lowered the revenue coming in by $75,000. And on the expense side, that same amount changed based on lower estimates in staffing and the health insurance rates. But it is a break-even fund, so the revenues coming in and out are $10.6 million on the next slide. So there is no fund balance at the end of each year. So there is no fund balance at the end of each year. Our next fund is our food service fund. Revenues went up about $710,000. We increased our meals served estimates. We also saw that we're getting our 12 and 1/2 cents from the state. Last year, we didn't get that, but then this year, they decided to use that, even though we get a higher rate from the federal reimbursement through the Seamless Summer Program. We had higher à la carte sales with our store being open at the high school. So overall, those three things have helped our revenue budget for food service. On the expense side, since we were doing more meals, we added staff at our November meeting. We have higher food costs with more meals going out. And then on the capital outlay line, we have our fridge and freezer repair that is happening at Pinewood. So overall, we're increasing our fund balance by almost $800,000, to $800,000. So that puts us in a good position. We do have a lot of older equipment that needs to be replaced, so that'll help us in the future years. Our community service fund, our revenue went up $482,000. They are also receiving a lot of federal money due to the pandemic with childcare, ABE, and summer preschool. And then they also had additional programming that has picked up for the year. So they're going from $4.1 million to $4.6 million in their revenue budget. On the expense side, expenditure is also going up for $117,000, again related to the grants with additional staff for ABE and technology equipment, the childcare stabilization, and the staff for the summer preschool. Overall, their fund balance is increasing $170,000 to end the year about $622,000 overall. Again, that's made up of different categories, but they're starting to rebound from the pandemic. Our last fund that we'll look at is the other post-employment fund that has our retiree insurance premiums for our non-certified. So the estimates were lowered just a little bit due to the, again, the premiums being lower than what we expected and a little bit added for interest revenue. On the expense side, a similar amount reduction of $34,000. So overall, our OPEC trust will decrease almost $200,000 to end the year about $1.4 million. So the next two slides just has a one-line summary for all our funds that, whether they're changing or not. So if you have any questions on any funds, I'd be happy to take them.
Do you have a question about the food service fund? About you talked about equipment that needs to be replaced with the new bids coming in for the contract up for the food service? Is that something that's included in those bids? Is they, do they say we'll replace some fridges for you with part of the bid process? Or how does that work?
Yep. So one of the criteria that we put on, the evaluation criteria for all companies that were going to bid on the proposal to see, one of the things that I rate as important to Monticello is if they made an investment anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000 in food service equipment to the schools. That was a true investment, not something that was amortized over five years and expensed back to us. So we had a couple that were going to make some investments to the school if they were chosen.
Which obviously would help in some purchase of equipment. Okay.
This doesn't include, though, at Pinewood, there was some wall or some structural things. That's not included in this, is that right?
Correct. That has to be in our general fund.
Any questions?
Need a motion to approve this?
I do need a motion to approve.
I will move to approve the budget revisions for the 2021-2022 school year as presented.
Second.
Jennifer's made a motion to approve the budget changes as presented, the second by Candace. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes six zero. Thanks. Next, we have. Mr. Olson Superintendent with some first reading and some second reading.
I get to get the update as the policy committee has been working very hard on bringing forth many policies, as you'll see here. First reading, we're bringing forth the following policies for first reading. They come through the policy committee. It's Policy Number 101, which is legal status of the district. 103, complaints, which has front employees, parents, and other persons. 203.5, school board agenda. 210, conflict of school board members. 303, superintendent's section. 401, equal opportunity and equal employment opportunity. 402, non-discrimination policy. 403, employee discipline suspension. 408, school district employee. 490, back-up free environment. 514, bullying provision policy. 516, student application. 520, student surveys. All of these policies come from MSBA with a recommendation to approve the entire group together. As recently discontinued servicemen. So the minor findings found in these policies address the changes and update other references. The policy committee said has been working through the recommended changes. All board members have had this opportunity to review the policies in the board packet. Are there any questions at this time from any of these groups, this group? Great. So then we'll move forward to.
Second reading?
Move them to the second reading. All right. So then now, what's the second reading? Thank you for everybody's hard work on those. That brings us to the second reading of policies. So the following policies are coming to us for second reading. Previously brought forth for our first reading at the March 21st meeting. These policies are Policy 204, school board meetings. Policy 205, open and closed meetings. Policy 208, development, adoption, and implementation of policies. Policy 305, policy implementation. Policy 521, disability, non-discrimination. These policies came to us as a group from MSBA as well. And they also had minor modifications for the sake of making the policies more clear. Currently do have Policy 305, but are going to incorporate it to provide more structure and clarity in our policies. The policy committee, policies while the entire board also had the first reading to look at. Is there any questions regarding these policies? And.
If this question. This is an action item.
I move that we accept at the second reading policies number 204, 205, 208, 305, and 520.
Second.
Motion made by Kathy to accept second reading of policies 204, 205, 208, 305, 212, and 521 as seconded by Jennifer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes six zero.
Jeff, if I could just remind everybody, once they get to this stage, we do then update the district website, which has all our current policies.
And that is all. Motion.
Second.
Motion. Motion adjourned, adjourned by Candace, seconded by Jennifer. Favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes six zero. Meeting is adjourned at 6:49 PM.
Severe weather can strike anytime, anywhere, but there's a simple way to stay safe. Hey, Jim Cantore here. I stay safe in dangerous weather by planning ahead. You can stay safe, too, with a few easy steps. Build an inexpensive kit with supplies for your family's needs. Write down important information like phone numbers and medications. Always talk with your family and remember any pets in your planning. Be ready, be safe. Start your plan today at ready.gov/plan.